Well, the regular meeting of the Quincy School Committee is for December 6th to order. Thank you for all of being here this evening. First, we want to stand and pledge allegiance to the flag. Let me bring some handings to acknowledge our people overseas who are protecting us and the members who will come back safely to us. Thank you. Before we get started, I was looking at all of my last meetings, Vice Chair of the School Committee, and I started out yay. But I don't have that thing in front of me, I still can't figure it out, but anyway. Started off with a gavel that was presented to Ted DiChristofaro, Council President, back in 1990, Superintendent's father, presented to him by Michael Perrin and Paul Harold, who has since passed away. Started my tenure as Vice Chair using this gavel, and I'm going to be ending my tenure as Vice Chair again using this gavel, so it's very special. That being said, so Superintendent, could you please call the roll?
Mr. V.
President.
Mrs. Hubley. Mrs. Isola. Mrs. Mahoney. And the President. Also, schoolwork leader, Quinsey High School, Timothy Nguyen, and from North Quincy High Schools, Luke Moore.
I need a motion to approve the regular meetings, meeting minutes for November 15th. Motion approved by Mrs. Jimenez, seconded by Mrs. Hubley, all is in favor.
Aye.
Approval of minutes for executive session minutes for November 15th. Motion approved by Mrs. Isola, seconded by Mrs. Hubley, all is in favor.
Aye.
Moving on, we are second meeting, item on the agenda is open forum. Open forum is an opportunity for community input regarding the Quinsey Public Schools. After giving his or her name and address, each speaker may make a presentation of no more than four minutes to the School Committee. An individual may not exchange their time or yield to others. Is there anyone here this evening who would like to speak at open forum?
Good evening, members of the School Committee, Mayor Koch, and Superintendent DiChristofaro. My name is Courtney Perdius, and I live at 86 Rubens Street in Quincy. On behalf of Citywide PTO, Scott Alessandro and I would like to take a moment to recognize and thank members Anne Mahoney and Barbara Isola for all of their hard work and dedication to the students, families, teachers, and staff of Quincy Public Schools during their tenures on the School Committee. Well, Mrs. Mahoney, excuse me, and Mrs. Isola have given many years of their valuable time, time away from their families and friends, to tackle issues facing our students and our schools. Their work and advocacy has had direct impacts on Quincy Public Schools' curriculum, policies, special education, facilities, and athletics, and has made our school district one in which we can all be proud to send our children. Mrs. Mahoney, we'd like to thank you for your efforts to increase communication and involvement of parents and families in school committee discussions and decisions. We appreciate your outreach to Citywide and to families across the city, and we look forward to having your leadership and your voice on the City Council. Mrs. Isola, we appreciate and applaud all the work you've done in your nine years on the School Committee, especially on the Teaching and Learning Subcommittee, and wish you all the best in what comes next on your journey. We'd also like to congratulate Mrs. Lebo on her reelection to the School Committee. Scott and I are excited to continue to work with you. Mrs. Hubley, Mr. Bogoli, Mr. Jimenez, and new members Doug Gattro and Anthony Andronco in the upcoming year on the issues facing our schools. Again, thank you to Mrs. Mahoney and Mrs. Isola for your years of service to our schools. Thank you.[285.33][285.33](Applause)
Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight at open forum?
Scott Alessandro, 70 Edward Street. Dear Dr. DiChristofaro, members of the Quincy School Committee, the Quincy Citywide Parents' Council, also known as Citywide Parent Teacher Organization, or Citywide PTO, embraces Quincy Public Schools' mission to provide a safe and nurturing learning environment for students to achieve their individual maximum potential. We also support students' learning to value and respect each other's equal needs. It is for these reasons that we, as an organization, believe that actions required regarding North Quincy High School's current mascot. Citywide PTO acknowledges that the School Committee voted in 1993 to keep the mascot despite being asked two years earlier by the U.S. Department of Education to re-voluntarily remove it. In 1995, the Boston Office of the Federal Civil Rights Office found the mascot offensive and ruled that offensiveness did not equate a hostile environment. Today, we have a more informed understanding of what is inappropriate for our learning environments and what students, all students, need to be successful in school. Offensive was legal, should not be the standard for our district. In order to create QPS to be a district where students and their needs are the priority, we must ensure that all our messaging and actions and all the symbols for our messaging and actions are true to this mission. Citywide PTO does not believe the current North Quincy High School mascot goes up to this ideal. Citywide PTO proposes the following steps to address the North Quincy High School mascot: Our desire to start this dialogue is not intended to discount or distract from Dr. Yakubian's contributions to our city. We are also not passing judgment on the motivations or character of those involved in the creation or support of the mascot. We are sensitive to and understand the history and enthusiasm of the current mascot. We ask for the same sensitivity and understanding why we feel this time to change. Our recommendations for School Committee and QPS administration: Work with Visions Incorporated to explore how best to frame the discussions around the current North Quincy High School mascot; Develop a strategy and timeline for inclusive discussion in the appropriate Quincy Schools and appropriate grade levels; Provide teachers and administrators professional development time to participate in planning; And determine how best to hold these conversations in their respective schools. Recommendations for Quincy Public Schools: Since the North Quincy High School mascot represents not just North Quincy, but all Quincy Public Schools, conversations about the mascot should not be limited to North Quincy. QPS should provide opportunities for students at all Quincy Schools to discuss the appropriateness of the North Quincy High School mascot in a safe, nonjudgmental atmosphere where differences of opinion are recognized, understood, appreciated, and utilized for the benefit of all. We invite the social studies departments and teachers to meet their students in critically examining the history, perception, and accuracy of the current mascot and whether or not reflects educational excellence and culture of inclusion expected in Quincy Public Schools. Citywide PTO would welcome the opportunity to be a part of this process. We will dedicate the time and energy needed to assist and support students, teachers, administrators, and School Committee members to move forward the steps outlined above. Respectfully, Quincy Citywide PTO. And I want to add to this letter, over the last two days, we've heard from parents on all sides of the decision, and it has reinforced the goal of having a dialogue concerning the mascot.
Is there anyone else this evening who would like to speak at open forum?
Hello, John Raffel, 62 Merrill Road, 1987, graduate of Quincy High School. And I just want to say that I support Mr. Yakub, and I support keeping Mr. Yakub. It's part of the tradition, people that play football, there's nothing racist at all about Mr. Yakub. I'm not sure what this attack is over. There's so many important things, from MCAAs to building new schools, lots of subjects that we need to get on and get past the subject. I'd be very disappointed if we lose part of the history that I can walk with. I want Mr. Yakub, I feel like they are attacking Mr. Yakub, and you're discriminating against Mr. Yakub. Leave Mr. Yakub alone, we want him as our mascot. The people from North Quincy who graduated from, I'm a native of North Quincy, and Mr. Yakub is a native of North Quincy, and he belongs in North Quincy just like I belong in North Quincy, just like everyone else belongs in North Quincy. So, I urge you to not listen to one organization of what their points of views are, listen to what their points of views are from everyone who lives in the city, especially those who actually graduated from North Quincy High School. I thank you very much for your time, thank you.
Anyone else this evening who would like to speak at open forum?
Hello, Mayor, Governor, and Mr. Bogoli, and the school board. Today, I ask permission to speak as community member.
Please state your name and address.
That's coming. Last time I cried, you screamed at me.
I did not scream at you.
Young people, we can't prefer. Those are easier guys. I'm Ina Sherian, noble, and a former Quincy resident, out of Willingham Way. I believe because we have a place in the Quincy, and I also attend for parish church. I am a community member. Last time we had to do a motion, and called. In this time, I simply ask permission to speak. Do I have?
Yes, you do.
Thank you. I come here because I understand community. Living in Quincy, I came to love. However, seeing two schools, one little president in the oven with the Red Raiders, tells me like I was reenacting pre-revolutionary war America here. I understand honoring Dr. Yakubian, but North Quincy, I am part of the community of the world. When North Quincy plays any team, anywhere, they take the envy with them. If it is designed to honor Dr. Yakubian, he is a man. Why is the man on the team named Red Raiders? And why is he dressed in traditional indigenous garb? The feather in the hair is considered sacred of war, and his shirt, a fat yellow red, that is not an image of excellence or pride to our indigenous people. This issue says 80% white. It is not the burden on the indigenous to be the only ones to object to racism. It impacts all of us every day. I ask the school for honor from Mr. Val, Senator Brock Orville, and Citywide PTO. And like from the Corny, I have reached out to all leading leadership, Superintendent, School Committee Mayor, and my local state office, and senators. This issue has historic implications for Quincy, it can be a danger for all of us. Thank you.
Is there anyone else this evening who would like to speak at open forum? Seeing no one else, this portion of the meeting is closed. Moving on to the Superintendent's Report, Dr. DiChristofaro, please.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call down the Deputy Principal of North Quincy and Quincy High School. To talk about the big school.
Thank you, Dr. DiChristofaro. Good evening, everybody. Today, we're recognizing a few students who have a great honor for both of us. The National Merit Scholarship Program, we've talked about before, students qualify by way of their pre-SAT or PSAT, also known as National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. There are scores on that. In the spring of 2016, this particular cohort determined their eligibility. About a million and a half test takers every year are in the pool, and we're talking about a group of eight, four, eight students who have made the top, I believe, 50,000 in one level, what they call commended students at that level. One of the eight is additionally a semifinal student, has continued on in the program, is one of only 16,000, front of those one and a half million.
No, it's, thank you for having me, see it tonight, it is a great honor, but this is what in public schools is all about, is recognizing academic achievement. So, at this time, I'd like to call up two students from Quincy High School, who are in as commended National Merit Scholars, Rachel Chen and Paul Mahoney.
For North Quincy High School, there are three in that commended group we talked about, Jing Yi, Xu, Andrew Lee, and Samuel Sajani, ready and prepared if they are here. And semi-finals, the 16,000 is Ryan Wong. I don't know if Ryan has made it tonight, Ryan here? Anyway, Ryan goes on and qualifies for something further in that program. We wish him luck on that.
Thank you very much. Picture taken at the School Committee. I want to mention too, thank you to those students and their parents as well, but also commercials say that all of these students attended Quincy Public Schools since elementary, five years since kindergarten. So, I want to thank the teachers, the principals, administrators, certainly their parents for everything they've done for these very gifted students. Thank you very, very much. Just want to mention a few things before we get going. Want to make sure to thank our middle school robotics program, maybe five of our middle school students went to WPI, competed over the weekend, and I want to thank certainly their coaches from Atlantic, Mike McGuire and Brian Angel, that are there from Rock Meadows, and Master Gollum, Michelle Connor from Suncoast, and Laura Henderson from Point, and Lou Winterella from Swoon. I want to thank them for all the time they consistently give our students, and I want to thank the students for going quite a distance to compete, and they did very, very well. LaMiguel Academy alumni, swimming, it's on December 30th, I should mention that, because number one, he's just, he's outstanding and passed away. A swim coach passed away last year, so there is an alumni meet that's on December 30th, 2:00 to 4:00 o'clock at our Lincoln Bay Park Pool. 'Tis the season, it's Monday evening, it's always a great, great event. We make sure as many people there as possible, it's usually a sellout, from 750 to 800 participants, so I look forward to that. Academy last night here at Central was incredibly successful. I didn't get the exact number, but I would say 75 to 100 parents were here, and thank Erin and the team administrators and special ed for arranging that. It was a great, great night for parents, a very informational night for parents as well. New School Committee orientation, not so fast, new School Committee orientation, we'll be reaching out to Mr. Gattro and Mr. Andronco and bring them in for orientation at probably at the end of December, and we welcome them certainly to the committee. Holiday concert schedules at their end of places. Ginger Bread House by QPAC is on December 8th at Quinsey High School. You also have the Squawn newsletter in front of you. I want to thank everyone that had everything to do with Thanksgiving Day game. You know, Mr. Taglari won't think it was the greatest game in the world, but it really was. I'm so proud of our players, our athletic directors, our coaches, cheerleaders, everything. It was a wonderful day for the city, so I want to thank everyone for that, and with that, I would also...
On new business, we are blessed to have our American Education Week poster and essay contest winners. Ms. Roy, Dr. Hallip, and Ms. Perkins are contestants.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Koch, Vice Chair Mr. Bogoli, Superintendent DiChristofaro, and members of the School Committee. Thank you for inviting our American Education Week poster and essay contest winners to this evening's School Committee. It's an honor to recognize the hard work of our students and their teachers. Across the country, the third week in November is recognized as American Education Week. It's designed as an opportunity to celebrate public education, our students and teachers, as well as to honor the individuals or groups within the community that helped make Quincy Public Schools an outstanding place to learn and grow. Students were invited to participate in this annual contest, and 200 posters and essays were judged within five grade level categories. We encouraged individuals or whole classrooms to submit a poster or essay describing this year's local theme, which was "Embracing Our Differences: How Quincy Public Schools Promote Success for All learners." Tonight, we'd like to present the student or classroom submissions that received the highest, the three highest scores from our team of judges, including retired teachers, Janice Renee, Maureen Duggan, Sandy McNeese, and Jan Gamond. The first place winner for each category will share their essay or poster with you. At the end of each category, students, teachers, and principals will be invited up on stage to shake hands with the School Committee and pose for a picture. I'd like to thank all the principals, assistant principals, department chairs, and teachers who are here this evening to support the winning students, and extend a very special thank you to the families and friends who came to support their child's writing achievement. Erin Perkins, our Director of Special Education and Elementary Curriculum Programs, will introduce our youngest finalists.
Good evening. In the elementary grades, our students did an excellent job describing in both picture and written form how much they value respect and diversity within their schools and in their classrooms. So, it is my pleasure to announce the winners for the K-2 category. So, our third place winner, holster winner, is Ms. Helling, second grade class from Atherton and Howe School. They are here tonight with their teacher, Ms. Helling, and Principal Barrera. With Ms. Helling, second grade class, come on up and show your poster. Excellent job, Ms. Helling's class. Our second place poster winner is Ms. Flynn's class, first grade classroom, representing Parker Elementary School, and they are here tonight with Ms. Flynn and Principal McNeil. Ms. Flynn, Scott, would you come on up and show your poster? And for our first place winners, we would like to invite Mrs. Hickson's first grade class from Wallaston Elementary School. They are here with their teacher, Mrs. Hickson, and their principal, Mr. Hesse. If they could just come on up and just share a little bit about their poster.
Good evening. We're joined by our very hardworking creative first grade students, who have worked very hard on their project, and I want to pass the microphone to their first grade teacher, Ms. Hickson, who will introduce them and also share their project called "Take a Peak at Our School."
First, I'll have them say their names.
I'm not, Kate. Anita. Hugo. Alan. Olivia.
My class worked very hard on their poster. We discussed all kinds of differences that people have, such as different interests, different ways of learning. We then brainstormed all the ways that Wallaston meets everyone's needs to help them do well. The students turned their ideas into wonderful sentences, and then completed their poster with many unique illustrations about our school. Great job. Moving on to our grade three to five essay winners. We have our third place essay winner is third grader Emily Davis from Ms. Kotoski's class at Clifford Marshall, and she is here tonight with her principal, Ms. R. Hearn. The second place essay winner is Sunmai Ibelito from Mrs. Gilbert's fifth grade class at Point Webster Middle School, and she is here tonight with her teacher, Mrs. Gilbert, and her principal, Principal Ms. Barrett. And we'd like to now invite our first-place winner, Vance Malley. And he is in fifth grade in Ms. Healy's class at Bernazani Elementary School. And he is here tonight with his teacher, Mrs. Healy, and his principal, Mr. Dion.
Quincy Public Schools promotes success for all learners in many different ways. All of these ways are helpful in treating intelligent and successful students. Quincy Public Schools recognizes that no two students are exactly the same. Some ways that Quincy Public Schools promotes success for all learners are by offering pull-out programs, implementing technology in classrooms, encouraging and motivating students with awards and prizes, and having different learning levels of books for everyone. Pull-out programs are designed to fit a child's specific academic need. Some different pull-out programs that are offered in Quincy include speech, English language learners, homework help, box, and occupational and physical therapy. Pull-out programs each have a specific purpose. ELLs for learners that don't speak or understand English very well. Speech therapists in the school send and help learners who have communication problems. For example, a student might be shy speaking in front of a group of people who need extra help in classroom directions. Occupational therapy is designed for students who need extra help performing daily tasks necessary for school. And physical therapy is for students who need to develop coordination, balance, and muscle growth for their bodies. There are so many other pull-out programs whose purpose is designed to help children become successful now and in the future. Another useful way that Quincy Public Schools promotes success for all learners is by offering new technologies, new technology in classrooms across Quincy with Chromebooks, iPads, and Smart Pools. This technology helps learners become more successful because they have helpful and teacher-approved websites on them. Most children don't like to write long essays by hand and work better and are more comfortable using computers. These new Chromebooks allow children to type these long essays instead of writing them by hand. These Chromebooks correct grammar and spelling mistakes, which will make life so much better for your teacher. There's also a feature that allows children who struggle with typing to speak their essay into the computer and the computer types it for them. Another way that Quincy Public Schools promotes success for all learners is by offering prizes for good behavior and giving awards for students who are exceeding expectations. These prizes promote success in all learners because they encourage students to keep up the hard work and keep doing the right thing. For example, at my school, if a teacher sees you do something positive or kind, they will give you a bear paw. Most schools in Quincy have similar programs and awards if you do something impressive. The final way how Quincy Public Schools promotes success for all create successful learners is by having books that fit everyone's reading level. If you were a very fluent and accurate reader, then you would read a higher-level book. But if you weren't a very fluent and accurate reader, and in fact, you're struggling with reading, then you would read a lower-level book that would be most appropriate for you. Quincy Public Schools promotes success for all learners in many different ways. Some of these ways include pull-out programs, new technology, encouraging awards and prizes, and offering different-level books for everyone. Quincy Public Schools has been very successful in creating better students because of these efficient and successful ways.
It is now my pleasure to turn it over to my colleague, Bridget Vaughn, who will introduce the winners in grade 16.
Thank you, Erin. In grade six to eight, students focused both on using evidence in their writing and developing engaging and expressive voice. Creativity, ideas, and content are all established and cultivated through the process of drafting. And clarity, sophistication, vocabulary, organization, conventions come through the process of editing. All of the submissions this year demonstrated qualities of excellence in middle-level composition, so the competition was strong. Fortunately, I have the honor of working with a terrific team of middle-school essay judges, and it is now my pleasure to introduce our middle-school essay winners. Our third-place essay was a tie between two students from the same school. Ada Lyde and Vivian Chen are both eighth graders in Mrs. Phillips' English Language Arts Class at Atlantic Middle School. And they are here with Principal Ms. McNeil. Our second-place essay was written by Ruby Wabene. Ruby is a seventh-grade student representing Pride Valley's Middle School. She's here with her teacher, Mr. Walsh, and Principal, Mr. Gilbert. Along with those two finalists, it's my pleasure to introduce our first-place essay winner, Ni Hua, a seventh-grade student from Sterling Middle School. And she's here with her English Language Arts teacher, Mrs. Rizzo, and her principal, Dr. Franciscini.
And Ni Hua is going to share her beautiful essay with you.
We are moving. I remember my mom saying three years ago, "I didn't think that these simple words could have such a significant impact on my life." Before I knew it, my mom, brother, and I were boarding a flight to Japan, then to a man destination, the United States. I left my friends, family, and even my comfort zone behind. I traveled without any goals in mind or thoughts about my life would be like. What I do know is that my future was rewritten ever since that day we left Vietnam. When I first started school, I encountered many obstacles, and I've tried to overcome them in order to succeed. But of course, that's always the case as I also experienced failure. The hardest obstacle that I faced from my first school year is possibly trying to understand and speak fluently in English. Due to the fact that I lived in Vietnam for basically my whole life, it felt so unfamiliar to hear a different language and even more foreign to respond to it. In addition, I was too shy to even attempt to communicate with others. I was threw from others to my lack of understanding in English. There's traffic difference in social customs. I barely survived my first step school. Fortunately, Quincy Public Schools provided me with a program in order to help me do success. With the help of the ELL program, I survived my transition to the American classroom. My teachers slowly assisted me throughout my journey of studying. They gave me extra time when I couldn't finish an assignment. They were patient with me. Every time I succeeded in something, they would give me more challenging work and set goals for me. I read books that teachers had recommended, and the teachers were willing to stay extra hours to help me. It was not long before I became more engaged and improved my English and began to develop all the necessary functional skills. During classes, I was encouraged to put my shyness aside and engage my peers. The teachers purposely paired with all students in several class assignments to change my timid behavior. Soon, I realized that making friends could also improve my education in a positive way. I was able to speak in front of large crowds and learn from other people's experience. Although my shyness has not yet disappeared, it has subsided as a pro to be more confident in my ability to communicate with others. Looking back, I understand why I live in Vietnam, and I understand how hard it is to learn a normal language and assimilate in a non-culture. As a result of my hard work and dedication, I am enrolled in Ben's classes for English and Math. My teachers and family provided me with numerous opportunities so that I could succeed. I am forever grateful for the progress I have made. And thanks to Principal's school, I realize my comfort zone is where I belong.
And I'd now like to turn the podium over to Dr. Ballot to introduce our last category.
Good evening. I'm here to announce the ninth and tenth-grade winners for the American Education Week Essay Contest. Our third-place essay winner is Diana Gao from Mrs. Hanson's grade nine English class at North Quincy High School. And Mr. Shaw is also here to present him. Our second-place essay winner is Patrick Rat from Mrs. Bakary's tenth-grade English class. Patrick is representing Quincy High School, and she's here with his principal, Mr. Tyker. And we'd like to invite our first-place essay winner, Hannah Murphy, to the podium. Hannah is also from Quincy High School, and she's a ninth grader in Mrs. Sasso's English class.
Quincy is an incredibly diverse city. An element of its strength comes from the diversity of lifestyles and ideas of its citizens. I encounter this varied population almost every day in my school environment with appears of varied nationalities, interests, and academic levels. Quincy has always done its best to advocate for the learning of all its students, such as through ELL programs for those who have just immigrated or specialized or produces those with learning disabilities. However, the service that has most directly impacted my life is the support of my younger brother and has received that helps him to succeed in school. My brother has a rare condition known as complex motor stereopathy, which is characterized by involuntary repetitive physical movements. For my brother, it is an arm busting and jumping. He enters a state called engrossment, where he goes into an internal world, trance-like, all things with events. He sometimes slips into the state when he is nervous, excited, or even bored. These movements are uncontrollable and often distract him during class time while he's doing homework. While my parents did their best to keep him on track at home, they could not monitor his school hours, and he suffered for it. He did not have enough focus to finish tests or complete tests. And since he was in a private school, he could not get the assistance he needed. My parents decided the change had to be made. In second grade, my brother was transferred to Montclair Elementary School. My parents had to fight to get any assistance he needed, but after hours of meetings, testing, and filling out paperwork, he was set up with a physical therapist and an occupational therapist, who assisted him with his gross and fine motor skills. He also worked with an aide in the classroom who assisted him until the middle of his fourth-grade year. The difference in his performance was remarkable. The difference in his test scores and overall comprehension was truly astounding. Although he still struggles, the skills he learned and the assistance he received will weather fit him throughout his academic career. Those with learning disabilities can often be marginalized in school environments. There is a belief that those who need assistance do not have the same capacity to succeed as those who function without special requirements. I believe that once accomplishments well-learned do not hinge on how they learn, but their effort and the way they take advantage of what is offered to them. A student with a condition that hinders their learning can be just as successful, if not more, than a typical student if they have a good work ethic and available resources. There is no shame in asking for additional help, for you can only benefit from encouraging your learning experience. I will always be grateful for the assistance my brother received. The school system's willingness to accommodate his learning has opened up possibilities my family could not have dreamed of just a few years ago. I hope any students who feel they are struggling know there is a strong support system ready to back them up and that they can succeed. Quincy's recognition of the unique needs of its students offers a path to success and allows all students to excel in their own right.
Thank you to all of our essay winners. Just one final announcement. Our eleventh and twelfth-grade students will be participating in Alliance Club Speech Contest, which will occur on December 12th at 6:00 p.m. at the Quincy Historical Society. We wish these students good luck with their speech competition presentations. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. It was a great listen to and see how our kids in this school system experience diversity within our public schools. I'd like to ask anybody in the committee if they'd like to comment. Mayor Koch?
Sure, just like the attitude of Vice Chair's comments. This committee meets on a regular basis all year long, and sometimes we get into some deep policy issues. Sometimes we have disagreements on issues. But one thing we're agreement on is that your presence here tonight, this is what it's all about. So proud of each of you. Congratulations. Keep up the great work, and happy holidays, everybody.
Chief, I recognize Mrs. Mahoney. Chair, recognize Mrs. Mahoney.
So, this is kind of interesting because this is my last meeting, but it's probably one of the most special meetings I ever attend, is to see the essays from our youngest to our oldest. And this one particularly touched home to be a key essay for the future of Quincy Public Schools, because the students really touched upon many of the things that we do well and the things that we need to recognize in our school system, and the things that we as school group members even have to make sure we're paying attention to so that we're fueling your education. So I thank everybody for their thoughtfulness, for their approach to this essay, and for their enlightenment that they brought to the table for us all tonight. And for all the parents out there, it's a really fast ride, K through 12, so I hope you're enjoying every second. I know this is a really tough time of year because everybody's schedule's really, really busy, but it is a really great night to celebrate your students and their achievements tonight. So thank you very much for letting me be part of it. Thank you.
Mr. Scholz?
This is my last meeting also, and it is always my favorite meeting of the year. I'm always, I shouldn't be amazed, because our students always bring such excellence to the table. And just to see all of you, and to see the parents and grandparents and friends supporting them, and the teachers and principals, it, it, it makes doing this job just so special. So, thank you so much, and I wish you all the best.
Again, from the school committee, again, thank you for coming this evening. It was great to hear and see all of you. Superintendent, if you want to say something?
No, no, I'm sorry. Too late now, I guess, but I'm sorry. But I want to thank everyone for being here, and thank the leadership team for all the work they do as well. The parents, thank you for being here, and certainly our students, remarkable students, principals, assistant principals that are here as well, and our teachers. Because our teachers make sure that they always take care of our kids. They are what we do best. We hire the best, and they treat our kids so wonderfully well. So, very appreciative of the teachers and all the special time that they give above and beyond. So, I want to thank again the parents that are here, and appreciate that. Our students and, 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 so happy holidays to you. And Vice Chair?
I think you just said it all. Have a brief recess so people can make their way home. Merry Christmas.
What's up, Mr. Andronico? Excellent, how you doing?
Have you heard? I'm giving you a stack that's coming bigger than you want to handle.
All right, so what do I do? Just one of them?
I usually do five at a time, but like, make sure that the others together. The one with the logo is my line.
So we'll be back in session. Second item on the new business is extended school day recess. Mayor Koch, say it.
Mr. Chairman, my intention is to put this into Policy Subcommittee, but just by way of background, in my discussions and focus, I've gone to a number of ETO meetings in different schools. And the question comes up periodically about why Quincy still does the happenstance on Tuesdays. And I know there's not a simple answer to it, and there's a lot of implications, which makes it a little complicated. But what I'd like to do is have a discussion about it, as we should in Policy Subcommittee, talk about implications if we entertain that. Of course, I know we have a lot of progressive development on those days in elementary, so I understand there's contractual implications that we have in various ways. But I think we ought to have a discussion. So at this time, I'd like to move that into Policy Subcommittee, making this a motion.
Second, Mr. Levo, opposed or赞成?
Aye.
I have seen out-of-country travel?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have some concerns about group going to this part of the world at this particular time. With what's going on in the world, I just don't think it's an appropriate idea. So I am going to vote against this particular motion. Opposed or赞成? Out-of-state travel overnight, going west to Middle School in New York City? Motion to approve, Mrs. Huber. Senator Mr. Camus, all is in favor?
Aye.
Additional business? Seeing none. Communications, Mrs. Huber?
Thank you. I would just like to send a thank you note to Seaside Stitchers, which is a knitting and Kennedy Center. Along with some of the groups that they have there, they donate, is it not on? I'm sorry. You hear me now? I would like to send a thank you note to the Seaside Stitchers, which are a knitting group and a Kennedy Center. Along with some of the other groups that they have there, they did a collection of hats, scarves, mittens, donated 260 hats, scarves, and mittens to Quincy Public School students that are homeless or in need. Many of these were beautiful, beautiful handmade, I know that the knitters made. They were absolutely beautiful, but talented, talented people. And I would just like to send a thank you note to them.
Mayor Koch?
Yes, I'd like to communicate to Dr. Alan Cubby and a note of gratitude from the school committee, but also an invitation to appeal before the school committee so that we can express high gratitude in person for establishing a $100,000 trust fund for scholarships for both high schools, which is pretty remarkable. He's an incredible guy, grew up in Quincy, it's an amazing immigrant story, and what a great American he's become, worked very, very hard, and has been very benefactor to both schools very quietly for many, many years. And Monday night, he appealed to the city council, and the city council accepted it, which establishes that trust fund, and then from the interest in dividends each year, scholarships will be awarded to five students from North Quincy High School, and five students from Quincy High School. So I'm sure my colleagues would agree, we owe him a debt of gratitude, and I'd like to send an invitation to him to pay before us, and it's appreciated. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Koch.
Reports of subcommittees? I'm sorry, Mr. Levo?
Yes, I don't know if this is on either. I would like to put in approximately safety and transportation for someone for us to know that by looking at the changes that the PTAs proposing to the new schedule during the figure eight loop, I think it's going to be a lot more traffic near our schools. Excuse me, Welson Station is closing, and they're going to have a single loop to go through Quincy, and they've changed their mind, and they're going to be doing a figure eight loop. And I just wanted to make sure that, Mr. Drake, was involved with that, and he is involved? Okay, that's, that's, we can bring it up in safety transportation. Thank you very much.
Okay, continuing on that communication, upcoming question. Mr. Mahoney?
I know we want to do this fast, but this will be my last communication. So I'd like to suggest, and this is just to open the dialogue and to hear, because there's people, the article in the paper and the conversations that we were receiving, the email, the text messages, and phone calls, both pro and against the outcome. Now, I'm not suggesting that, that we use doing other than bringing it into policy and to potentially start a dialogue and the discussion of it. I think it's important that you at least have that as a conversation. Maybe we can also invite Mr. Cubey to come to the meeting. I just think it's something that the, the public is, is, there's a lot of conversations going on about it right now, and it doesn't hurt to open dialogue and to give opinion from a group of people. So that's my last meeting. Not surprising that I would say something. I think that's where it needs to be, is a policy to have a discussion.
I believe it's already there.
I believe that this opens it up again, it hasn't really been discussed in a long time. Things can be in committee, but it doesn't necessarily mean that anything's happening in committee. I'd like to suggest that you invite him to Citywide, and maybe make an active conversation going forward.
Take that into consideration.
Sure. Thank you.
Upcoming school committee meetings, organizational meeting January 10th at 6:00. And then regular meetings will be January 10th, January 24th, and February 7th. All kind, building at 6:30. Upcoming, the subcommittee meetings are not scheduled currently. They would be held at the fountain building at 5:00. Going on to reports of subcommittees, athletics, Mayor Koch, report on the November 13th meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did have a meeting, we did work on athletic directors before for us, a few of us, excuse me, a lot of us to plan seek to help with some of the stats and data she shared with us. And we talked a lot about various sports, how we review the fall schedule, what the plans work for the spring. And I know some of the members of the committee asked the athletic directors to come back with some information in various areas. We asked about the training situation, and both schools, that is, that is in place. So if these minutes are online, if anyone wants to be included, put that motion to approve.
Any correction?
Teaching learning, Mrs. Isolde, report on the November 20th and 21st meetings.
Yes, over those two meetings, we reviewed the 11 school improvement plans from each of the elementary schools. We did through those plans, and as I said in the last meeting, I really encouraged parents to go online, to click on their school, and there you'll find the school improvement plan. In that plan, there are goals and action steps that your school is going through to educate the children. So it's, it's really very informative. So those are there, the minutes will also be online tomorrow.
Executive session, there is none.
Thank you. At this time, we could, we can go take a front row seat. I have a big screen in that. We have the Inspires. I don't know, we're going to seniority. Always seniority, it was out. Seniority. Well, as we begin really to, to recognize two of our valued committee members, I want to make sure we acknowledge, of course, Mayor Colin Roberts and Director Mayor Fredrickson that are here. So thank you for coming this evening. So as, as we begin to, to recognize our school committee members, both have been so supportive in so many ways, you know, just the foundational things you've done with class size, with academic programs, and certainly helping us with our business partnerships. So thank you very much for both of you. And a lot of this seeming it could be redundant because you've worked so hard off of so many of us. So Wayne Mahoney, thank you for 12 years of service for the Quincy School Committee. You've been a member, or a chair in all of our subcommittees, with facilities and security policy, teaching and learning, health, transportation, and safety, and three others of note, you know, budget, and the finance chair, and a very challenging 2010, 2011 budget, as well as being on the central building committee. You know, so here we are. So, so good. And also Boye '09, and then 14 through 17 being a really champion of special education in the school system, strengthening so many of our relationships with QPAC and its families, while supporting really a mountain of special education initiatives. Not all inclusive, of course, but just to highlight several, you know, the Landmark Initiative, Horton Gillingham, our program improvement plan with Director Perkins, as well as our staff involved in that as well, the Lips curriculum, ensuring also a direct connection between special education and our literacy program. It's been so, so valued for so many children. And working with special education pathways. Focusing on our high school courses recently this year, taking a look at our pathways, making sure our special education children, young adults, are getting what they need, not only in high school, but leaping forward with a great LEAP program, which our special ed team worked with you on, and so much appreciated, and such a great, great program. So, you know, as well as Project 351, as you remember, former governor, we said he went to his house and talked. his house and talked about that, so we thought maybe I'd mention that in the drop name, you know, as well as the drama, you know, interested in the drama, and really everyone of our social health programs as well. So thank you very, very much, and this is for you. Your service, you know, what are your most proud accomplishments?
First of all, I was extremely proud to be elected up to the school committee 12 years ago. And part of the reason why I ran for school committee was because I really felt parents needed a voice. I had three children in the Quincy Public School System, I was proud to live in my great-grandparents' house, and I wanted to stay here in Quincy. And that's why I stayed here, was to be involved, and we were waiting for our high school to be built, and we were waiting for Central and Sterling to be built, and we were waiting really for some of those great opportunities for our students. And I wanted them for my students, as well as many of the other students here in Quincy. So when I got elected, I was really proud of the work we did to get Quincy High School back on track, and to get Quincy built, and to make sure we had the siteing for Central, and to keep Sterling on the table. I'm really proud that Sterling is underway now, and it really has been a magical thing to see happen. But also, we had the height of a fiscal crisis during my tenure, and that was heartbreaking. I think it was probably some of the hardest things I've ever done in my career, was having to cut programs from our students, and from our teachers, and really from our community, because the heart of a community is education. And I truly, truly believe that, and the cornerstone of what makes us the strength is our schools. And to have to take anything away from that was something that was very hard for me. But working very hard alongside of people like Mr. Malaney and Dr. Christopher Omen, bringing my finance into play, I really educated people on the late kindergarten, and making sure people understood the number that we were going to cut was just a number, but the opportunities that we were going to cut were going to cost us millions in the long run. And we were able to save full day kindergarten, I'm so proud right now that everybody takes credit for full day kindergarten, and I don't care who does, because at the end of the day, we still have that, and it's the most progressive thing that we've done here in Quincy in a long time. And those are the things that I'm very proud of, along with many other things, serving alongside of my fellow colleagues in the school committee, and working very hard to see the achievements that we have seen in our students, and also see the lift in our educators as they have come before us to show us their work, and be questioned and grilled sometimes by many of us to make sure that we're providing the best that we can for our Quincy Public Schools students.
Excellent, well, thank you. And, you know, you've attended so many of our school events, partnership events, are there one or two that are most memorable for you?
There's so many that are memorable, but I've always loved the community service event, because what you see is from kindergarten all the way to 12th grade, the heart of our community, you know. Our kids are incredible, whether they're on the field playing sports, or they're on the theater, or they're in the band, or they're in the chorus, but also just the things that they do every day in our community. And that was before we put community service into play. They were doing it long before we asked them to make a requirement of it. But we made it a requirement, because we really wanted to make sure that the students that might have been shy to be able to go out there and do it, that they could feel the rewards of doing things in our community, and the lift that they would get from that too. So the things that I've seen, and I go all the way to the smallest to the largest programs that I've been to, whether it was Shakespeare at Sterling Middle School, when I got to see so many of our students that might have been shy to be on stage, to perform, and to perform in a way that, you know, you just took your breath away, to hearing our chorus, to going to robotics, and loading up my minivan with kids in the neighborhood, to bring them into BU, to let them see what was going on. I mean, I've had a great tour of the city of Quincy, whether it was with my students or with my own kids, as I call my students, the 9,000 students that we have every single year go through our Quincy Public Schools, they've made me very proud. And I see them when they get a little older, and they're working in our community stores, whether it's Stop &amp; Shop or CBS, and the pride that comes along with that. So it's all of those things, it's one of those things, but it's the whole story, Quincy Public Schools.
Thank you, thank you. So this is obviously your last meeting that you'll be with the school committee. Just any additional thoughts from Ann Mahoney?
Yeah, it's bittersweet, you know, 12 years is a long time. I basically have seen a whole generation of students from K to 12 graduate, two of my own children have graduated from Quincy Public Schools, and I'm proud to say, one is actually a graduate of college at this point. My last one's in 10th grade, so I don't think I'll ever really graduate from Quincy Public Schools. I am a big, strong believer of public schools and the diversity that we have in Quincy. I think it's what makes us so strong, and it's the powerful tool that we have here in the city of Quincy. As long as we embrace that, and we see that, and we realize it's the equalizer of all things, education, whether we're learning, you know, as I always say, you don't stop learning when you graduate from high school, you don't stop learning until you stop living. And what I've seen in our kids is a heart that has grown, and I've seen them hit their strides at all different levels, again, on the field, or in the theater, or when they're up in front of us reading their essays. I get a real buoy from all of those things, but also with graduation, because it's graduation is, and I look forward to it, I'm going to be on the council, so I will be a graduation student, not losing me, but I'll be able to see those kids graduate, and it means a lot, and it's the strength in our community. And knowing that some of our future leaders are right here in the Quincy Public Schools makes me so very, very proud. So 12 years has been a long time, and I'm never really going to be away from education, I don't think, I think it's in my heart. And I thank everybody from the educators, to the administrators, to the security guards, to the custodial workers, to everybody who makes our Quincy Public Schools the heart and family that it is, because when our kids come to school, that is their family. And they have a unique opportunity because they're learning, and when they graduate and go on, I hope that they're going to come back to us someday, because we have a great city, and we have a great community. So, thank you.
No, thank you, thank you for everything.
Hi, I'm Denise Carbone, and on behalf of the other Horton Gillingham teachers myself, I'd like to thank you, Ann Mahoney, for your support to implement Horton Gillingham into the language development classrooms. So from all of us, the teachers and the children, thank you, and we will miss you.
Hi, Ann, this is Dan Backcock. Thank you so much for helping to support the language development program and the professional development throughout the last couple of years. The language development program is enriched because of the landmark writing program that you help to support as students learn to write. Thank you, and good luck on your next journey.
Hi, Ms. Mahoney, we just wanted to take a minute from the special education team, and thank you for all of your years of service. You've been so supportive of all of our programs, and been so wonderful to all of our students and our families. So from the special education team to you, we wish you well, and we wish you good luck on your next endeavor, and from us, we say...
Thank you.
Welcome to Quincy Crisis Center Food Pantry.
We join Bonnie to you here at the pantry.
Our job is stocking and organizing food. Prepare grocery bags for the meals.
I'm Mo, holding the big hand from Honda, a grater, her box has a food bag.
We want to thank school committee for all their support for LEAP program, especially to Ann Mahoney, who we wish of good luck, and want to thank for all she's done for Quincy Public Schools.
Thank you and good luck, Mrs. Mahoney.
I think what we'll do is, if it's okay, I haven't gotten permission, if we have Mrs. Lebo come up and say a few words, and then we'll give both Barbara and Ann time when we go back up there to say a few words. Thanks.
It's hard not to cry, it really is hard not to cry. Ann Mahoney, as you know, has been an important part of the Quincy School Committee for the past 12 years. Her tenure has coincided with the education of her own children. Ann, many of the parents of the children in our schools have found her to be not only a great listener, but their voice on the school committee. She has done great work in her many committees that she has chaired and she has chaired and participated in. Her attention to safety and physical plant concerns has helped to improve our school environments and make our school community more secure. Ann has led policy reviews to help clarify, organize, and update the language that governs our work. Her work on the budget was always detailed, and her knowledge was impressive. Some of her most important work, as you've seen, has been as chair of the Special Education Subcommittee, where she worked tirelessly to ensure that all students had access to the curriculum with whatever necessary supports were needed for their success. Ann has been generous, very generous in her time, and in sharing her knowledge and skills. She always, always did her homework, and came to meetings well informed and prepared for discussion. She delved into things and worked to get to the core of any issue or topic. Speaking of topics, it could never be said that Ann shied away from any topic of discussion. As Ann goes to the city council, I know that her passion, her persistence, and her ability will serve Quincy residents, and I know that the school committee will gain another champion on the city side. So to Ann, I say thank you for all your years in your work on behalf of the children and the teaching community in Quincy, and I thank you, and I thank you for being willing to continue in public service for our great city. Thank you.
If any of the microphone wants to come up and say a few words, just say it, that's great, appreciate that. Mrs. Lebo, nice job, thank you. Anyone else wants to speak before we move on? Sure, James?
All I have to say is wow. I honestly can't believe that this day has come. I knew Ann before coming to this committee personally, as a student in the Quincy Public School System. Her impact on this committee has had an impact on my life as a student, and now graduate of the Quincy Public Schools. Her commitment to the Quincy Public Schools' mission as a school committee member is never going to be forgotten. One thing that she has taught in me as a school committee member is that the job is never done. She has come into every single meeting well informed, you know, whether it be an issue regarding the policy, or an issue within the school system itself, she's always been committed, always willing to work, and always willing to collaborate with her fellow members. And I just want to say thank you, from a colleague standpoint, and from a friend's standpoint, your passion and commitment to all the issues across the city are never going to be forgotten. And I am so grateful that your willingness to, you know, continue the hard work on the city side as a city councillor is still to exist, and I just want to let you know that we're all here to support you and your efforts as a city councillor, and if there's anything that we can do, you know, you always have a friend. So, thank you.
All right, so before we get to Barbara, I just want to say just that obviously you're off to great places. And tonight certainly is your night, and we know that there's another mountain awaiting for you, so we need to let you go. So everyone at Quincy Public Schools, thank you for all you have done, so thanks. Ousne, oh, it's Barbara, she is. Barbara, thank you for eight years of school committee service to our students, and our staff, and so many colleagues, and families who service here. Certainly was an extension of your significant contribution at Citywide as a president, that's where we first met, and we were very giving you word then, when you continued that, so thank you for that. Like you, you served on all of our committees, you know, subcommittees, whether it be Health Transportation, Safety Policy, and Special Education, you were a member of just about every, just about every meeting. As well as, but to note, you know, you have Facilities and Security, and what you did here was to tie in our school improvement plans with so many of the needs of our site, so that was appreciated, and that's obviously continued with your current leadership. As well as budget and finance, you know, as Ann, you had a very difficult time coming in, the years that you were budget chair of finance, and you got through that remarkably well, and we appreciated so much of your support at that time. The other thing I want to mention is QBA negotiations. A lot of our committee members have served on negotiations, not that great staff, but offensive, but it takes a lot of time, you know, a lot of effort, a lot of planning, and research, and you really became an absolute invaluable member as we went from a large group to a smaller group with Mayor Koch, and you, and Quincy Public Schools support as well. It was always about getting to you, and you make sure we never lost sight of why we're here, and that's our kids and our families, so thank you, you know, for that. You know, the champion effect for you was really when you took over teaching and learning, you know, with your colleagues, you know, taking a look at our school improvement plans, our program improvement plans, changing the format occasionally, you know, after the meeting, saying, well, why don't we try this and that, and always following your own program LEAP, you know, working with curriculum design, curriculum materials, and accompanying professional development plan, working around bands pathways from grade five to grade 12. Initially discussing, actually, when we talked about rapid reset in our principal's path and our collaborative connections, school-wide efforts, you had discussion, we gave that teaching and learning through the conversation we had after school improvement plans. So again, listening to your leadership. Also advocated for foreign language, and libraries, and our nursing staff, nursing support, so many concerts that you were at, the music program, and again, those concerts. And then the health education, as well as so many of our substance abuse programs that you felt so strongly about. So I want to thank you for that, and we're going to have Barbara on the big screen right now. This is inspirational. His service, you know, to our students, to our staff, and to so many families, you know, can you think of some of your proudest accomplishments on the school committee?
You know, school committee is a collaborative job. There's seven members of school committee, and I've been privileged to take so many votes on so many important issues, each of our budgets, which really added so much to the curriculum and to our school system, negotiating contracts for our different units in Quincy Public Schools, taking a vote on full day kindergarten, the track, and I could just go on, but those were proud moments, but those were things that I did with my colleagues. And to say that they're my proudest moments, I have to share that with the people I've worked with over the last eight years, because I'm just one member of the school committee. But I guess if I had to pick something that I was really proud of, I'd like to think that throughout these eight years, I really tried to keep the focus on our students, on our professional staff, on our support staff, on your leadership team, and how could I make, how to make Quincy Public Schools a better place, because we could always be better. We're pretty darn great, but we could always be better. And I always tried to keep the focus on Quincy Public Schools, and our students, and their families, and I never wanted it to be about me. I wanted to work with my colleagues, I wanted to try and affect change in a positive way.
Very, very good. And, you know, you've been incredible about spending so much time in our schools, and it's only events, you know, that we have, you know, system events and partnership events. Can you name a couple of those that could be your favorite events?
Well, anytime we were able to be with the children, of course, that was the best. And I think the highlight is going to the community service breakfast up at the Tyrrell Room. And that is just so fabulous, because we see the accomplishments of our students from the very youngest to our high school students, and really understand how... the very youngest to our high school students and really understand how much time and energy they put into not only their school environment but the community. And just to see those children come up in front of us and they're so proud and we're so proud of them, that I think is a highlight. I also love the partnership breakfast where we get to say thank you to the people in our community who just are so generous with their money, with their time, and really, really provide things to Quincy Public Schools that we couldn't otherwise provide. You know, we've been fortunate over these last eight years that we, the mayor, has been so generous with the budget that he's provided and has been so supportive of Quincy Public Schools. So we were able to do a lot with the budget, but those extras with the community members are just, that's just phenomenal.
So again, as you decided to leave, which we're not totally happy about, you know, what are some proud words that you may have for the Quincy School Committee, for our parents, for our staff and students?
Well, it's been an absolute privilege to serve. You know, I really need to thank everyone who supported me to help me get on the school committee and to keep me here for the eight years. I will always be grateful to that. I really enjoyed meeting so many people that I otherwise would not have met. I got to work with such talented people on the committee, and I'm grateful to my colleagues for all that I learned working with them and obviously working with you and your leadership team. I just want to tell everyone in Quincy that the Quincy Public Schools are in very good hands with Dr. Jay here and the leadership team, our principals, and our teachers, and the support staff throughout, our power professionals, you know, our secretarial staff, just transportation, security, and the budget, everything that, we are just surrounded by so many people who just really give their all. And I really am happy that I was a part of it. And I made my decision for various reasons, but I think it's important that we get new voices in, that it's important to hear different voices in this job. And I'm just really grateful that I was a part of it.
Yeah, well, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Isola, for bringing the technology education program back to the middle schools. It's through your support that we were able to provide students with many hands-on experiences. Countless students have been inspired by the program and feel prepared to pursue their goals in high school, college, and beyond.
Thank you, Mrs. Isola, for your support. Your efforts with the school committee helped promote our after-school programs and enrich many lives. We have a blossoming library with a strong debate club. Students are programming code throughout the seventh grade, and our Lego Robotics program has doubled in size.
Mrs. Isola, thank you so much for being invested in our Sterling community and for attending events like our robotics competition and Health Night. Your enthusiasm is contagious. The Sterling staff wishes you the best of luck, best wishes in all your future endeavors.
Thank you, Mrs. Isola, for supporting our Girl Rising Initiative at Sterling and throughout Quincy.
Thank you, Mrs. Isola!
Merci mieux pourra for your support of foreign language education in the middle schools. It is because of your dedication to offering both French and Spanish to the eighth grade that we have been able to build the program to now have French in four out of the five middle schools in Quincy. Thank you so much.
Muchisimas gracias. From the bottom of our hearts, thank you so much for all that you've done, specifically for the middle school foreign language program. We're so grateful for your unwavering support and insight and dedication to our program. We really cannot thank you enough. So congratulations on all that you've accomplished and best of luck in whatever comes next.
Merci beaucoup, Madam Isola!
Muchas gracias, Senora Isola!
We are very grateful to Ms. Isola for the eight years she has devoted to school committee. Her understanding of how pivotal real-world experiences are to the education of young people is truly wonderful. My own experience with literary magazine has shown me the value of this, and we are so grateful to Ms. Isola for her support.
Thank you, Ms. Isola!
Tough act to follow, Mayor, but come on.
Thank you, Dr. Jay. It's certainly a privilege for me to say a few words about my friend, Madam Isola. I guess, I think we first met at the Park Office when I was the Park Commissioner, and you were doing a little gardening, I think, around the beach of the school, and we were looking for a little guidance and assistance. But from that moment, I saw that passion you had for our city, particularly for our schools. We then crossed paths when your kids moved to Central, and you do a little gardening at Central. And I don't mean to minimize your other activities because I know you were so active in the PTOs, Agent Schools as well as the Citywide. So it's been a tremendous experience for me to work beside you. You came in office shop after I did, elective office that is with me, and we experienced one of the worst economic downturns in the history of the country. We saw a meltdown globally. And we, as a committee, had to make some very difficult, tough decisions, but I always appreciate your style. And I know you used to call me pretty much daily, asking me if the numbers had changed, if we could do this, if we could tweak this. And that was, those were private conversations, that was Barbara Isola, who you are, because it was about the committee, it was about the kids, about the city. It wasn't about Barbara Isola. And I always appreciated that style. I think you, as Vice Chair, you ran as good a meeting as anybody, kept us focused, you kept us on task, and you rolled up your sleeves and did the work in Subcommittee and as Vice Chair. And I was thinking there, coming tonight, if I could sum you up in one word, you know, what would that be? And I kept coming back to thoughtful, because you were always so thoughtful about every aspect of the role you played. In the world we're living in today, with all the craziness, whatever term you want to use, at various levels of government, particularly federal government today, we need more Barbara Isolas in government. I'm disappointed to see you leave us. I'm happy you're going out on your terms. You made that decision, but you have made an amazing impact on the school system. You've had an impact on me personally. I'm grateful for your leadership, your dedication, your passion, and your friendship. Congratulations and thank you, Barbara.
Before we raise that screen and go back in one dimension, just as I did with Ian, you know, just something from Dr. Seuss, you know, this wasn't from me, these are my colleagues. Barbara, you have brains in your head, you have feet in your shoes, and I understand they're expensive shoes, so now you can, without permission, steer yourself in any direction you choose, in oh, the places we know you will go. Congratulations.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Yublee.
Thank you. No, Mr. Bagoli isn't going anywhere, but just wanted to take a moment to thank my good friend and colleague, Mr. Bagoli, for his strength and wisdom in being our Vice Chair for the past two years. We appreciate all of his efforts and can see in everything that he does, the respect he has for Quincy Public School teachers, families, and students. Thank you very much.
I just want to echo some of the things that Superintendent and Mayor and Mrs. Lebo said about Ian and Barbara. I'm the oldest person on the committee, but that doesn't mean I still can't learn something from both of you. And I've learned a lot. I've learned how much you care about the school system, how dedicated you are to children of our school system. It's just been a pleasure working with you. We're going to lose a third of our committee. And that experience that you are taking with you, it's going to be a difficult void to fill. And I'm hoping, I'm keeping my fingers crossed, that the two gentlemen that come in to replace the two of you can do as good a job and are as dedicated as you have been for all the years you've served on the committee. I do know that our meetings may be a little bit short. And the school council meetings might get a little bit longer.
Dan, do I want to end it?
No, I was talking to you. But I really am going to miss the both of you. I really enjoyed working with you. I think you're just two great people. Not many people know that Ian and I actually grew up on the same street together. When I moved out, she moved in, so the neighborhood got better. But thank you again for all the thanks that Quincy Public Schools and all of your dedication.
Thank you.
An opportunity to speak for Ian and Barbara?
Guess because I served the longest, I get to go first. I want to thank you very much. That was a very special inspire tonight. And I don't particularly think I liked my, you know, my own vision of it, of me there, but the kids and the dedication and the thank yous, and it was very touching. It has been 12 years, and when I reflect back on that, I also think of the fact that I had the very privileged opportunity of growing up here in Quincy. So 12 years of my education was here in Quincy. I was educated all 12 years here in Quincy Public Schools. To come back and to live in the city and to raise my family here, and then to think that I spent 12 years in the school committee, really is kind of amazing to me. In those 12 years in the school committee, what I was able to see was not only just how our administration and our school system works, and I'm a big, truly a big believer in public education. Charter schools tried to come here to Quincy, and I didn't want that because I knew that it would take away from our public school students. And we have been very fortunate here in the city of Quincy to be able to keep our schools, just our public schools here. And what I've been able to see, like I said, was the hard work and dedication of the people who work here, not just the administration and the leadership team, but the teachers and custodians, just like I said. When you go into a Quincy Public School, from the secretaries to the nurses, to the custodian workers, everybody knows everybody who's going to that school. And it's a pretty special thing when you live in a city of 100,000 people. I mean, now we say 92,000, I think it's close to 100,000. But when you, and you come into a school system like Quincy's with the number of different languages, the hurdles that our students have and our teachers have, you feel like you're at home, and every student is given an opportunity. I want to thank the Q-PAC and the Citywide. I got the opportunity to work very closely to know what was going on in our schools. I want to thank all the parents who have reached out to me over the years, and there have been many, and the families that we've worked with. But most importantly, I want to thank all of you for having the opportunity to work with such a great group of people. And this is the current committee that I've known for 12 years, there's been many people who have come and gone. I worked with Kevin Melvey as a school committee member, and I've worked with him as a Deputy Superintendent. But it's amazing when I look back over the 12 years, the people, it is hard when people leave, but it is a good thing to, because you get new voices that come to the school committee, and I'm looking forward to that. So just a reminder to everybody, I still have a student in the Quincy Public Schools, and I will be calling should I need anything, to make sure that you're hearing my voice. I do have some concerns, so, but I'm not going far. I am going to the City Council, and I promise not to talk too long, Mayor Paul, but I will be bringing my homework to the City Council. And I don't know if people know this about me. I like to tell them I'm shy, but I'm not shy. I have a feeling I'll be bringing a lot of questions to the City Council, and I'm looking forward to that dialogue too, because the one thing I do know about the city is everybody who serves in it loves the city and wants what's the best for the city. So I thank everybody here tonight, and thank you, Mrs. Lebo, for your thoughtful words, and I thank all of you for doing the hard work that it takes to keep the system as strong as it is, and I look forward to graduations in the future. So thank you.
I guess it's my turn. You know, these eight years have been absolutely amazing. I really never envisioned that I was going to run for school committee, and when I made the decision to do so, I really didn't know what I was in store for. As was mentioned, I was very active in PTOs and Citywide, and just always liked to think I had my finger on the pulse of what was going on. But running for school committee has been just so enriching, just meeting the people who do the work in Quincy Public Schools every day, from Dr. DeCrispora to our principals, to our teachers, to our support staff, to the custodians, everyone here really has a vested interest in our students. And it's absolutely amazing to me that in a city this large, we have such a small community field. And I just want to thank everyone for giving me that opportunity because I've been so enriched by this experience. Never in my life did I think I would meet so many different people and truly enjoy the interaction when people called with problems, called with accolades, called with concerns. It was just so, so exciting to me to be able to try and have an impact on people's lives. You know, when you run for office, you have to put yourself out there, and it's kind of a hard thing to do at first, but I'm so glad that I was able to do it. And, you know, I had so many friends who helped me along the way, and I really want to thank them because you can't do this without having friends and supporters giving up their time and energy to help you to reach this goal. And I would be absolutely remiss if I didn't mention my two beautiful children who went through Quincy Public Schools, who are now out in the world, contributing to the world, living in different parts of the country, each doing really well. And of course, my husband, who, my poor husband, who would have to be my proofreader, my listen to this idea, my, you know, just, Tim, thank you so much. I mean, you just were absolutely incredible, and I couldn't have done it without you. So eight years is a long time. I'm really thrilled to have been here for these eight years, and I just know Quincy Public Schools are in really good hands. And I wish the committee well going forward to the next. And I wish the committee well going forward, to the two new members coming forward. I really wish you all the best, because I know that your heart is in the right place. And one of the things that I have to mention is that over the eight years, whether we had agreements or disagreements, it was always respectful. And that level of discourse is just so important in the world. And even in negotiations, we were able to come to, yes, and thank you for saying that, because I really, really, that was always my hope. So it's not goodbye, but just thank you all for the opportunity, and I wish everyone all the best.
Now, your vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to express my gratitude to all of your leadership over the last two years as vice chair. Public doesn't probably get a full sense of all the work involved in the committee, in subcommittee. People see the school committee meetings on air, but there's an awful lot of work goes on behind the scenes. And I want to thank you for your leadership and our work. And I know that we're joined tonight by one of the new school committee members elected, Mr. Intronico's here. Hopefully, you watched those comments on the screen and maybe nice and thanks about two very important contributing members who've had a love of years. And I look forward to you joining us, Anthony. Also know that one, one council-elect David Happy joined us tonight in the back. Former school committee man, wanted to be here for both Mrs. Mahoney and Mrs. Isola. David, thank you for being here. And anyone that's in this business knows that you can't do it alone. I know that Bob recognized Tim, in certain circumstances. Husband Kevin is up in the back there, he's still awake. We always think of spouses in this business. So with that, again, thank you, congratulations, and Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. I'm sure we'll be seeing you soon.
Can I just, I would be absolutely, I can't even believe I forgot this. And I think Anne agrees with me, Laura. Because everyone needs to know that Laura is our backbone. Laura gets the information, Laura has information at our fingertips, we don't have it. And so please forgive me, Laura, thank you so much.
Motion to adjourn.
Merry Christmas to all, and all a good night.
Next, he's pulling up. Thank you.
There you go, my man.
Perfect timing.
Video.
Congratulations to you.
Oh, no, don't worry, it worked this time, don't worry. No, that didn't work, but this does work, so I can... I can find, I can get, once I...
Do you? I didn't even know.
No, no, no. Yeah, if we found the pitch, if we found the pitch. That's what happens. Nothing good can happen. Yeah, we got it. Don't you email. Okay, you got it.
He's been there for years.
A while.
Oh, in your letter?
No.
No, I think just open a dialogue. It's hard to open a dialogue.
Yeah, that, they have a chance.
Have a chance with this.